I would like to consider the United States of America and to repurpose which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Sustich?
Here.
We have eight members present this evening.
Thank you, sir. Tonight it is our pleasure to recognize the 2013 Whipple champion Bethel Park High School Girls Basketball Team. The girls started the season with a number-one preseason ranking from the Post Gazette, and that ranking proved prophetic, as the team won the Whipple Championship for the first time in school history and qualified for the state basketball playoffs for the third time in the past four years. The season was a tremendous success, as the girls compiled a 23-4 overall record and finished second in the section with a 12-2 record. One of the season's highlights was a 15 consecutive game winning streak, which included a big win against section rival Mount Lebanon. That win snapped Libo's 25-game winning streak against section opponents. Going into the Whipple playoffs, the team was seeded number three and advanced to the title game by defeating Norwin, Penn Trafford, and Gateway along the way. In the championship game at the Palumbo Center, the Lady Hawks defeated section rival Chartiers Valley by a score of 37 to 34. The victory showcased the team's strength the entire season, defense, as Chartiers Valley was held to 26 percent shooting average for the night and was only able to score 16 points in the first three quarters of the game. Since her arrival in Bethel Park, Coach Joanna Burke has transformed the team into perennial contenders for the section and Whipple titles. We are pleased that this year's team was finally able to climb to the top of the mountain and bring a coveted Whipple Championship to Bethel Park. We are so proud of all your hard work and dedication that brought you this great success, and we congratulate you for an outstanding season and a well-deserved championship. You have generated a great deal of school and community pride, and we thank you for all the wonderful memories you have created for yourselves and your fans. We look forward to the team's continued success, as I hear four of this year's five starters are returning next year, correct? At this time, I would like to invite Coach Burke to join me at the podium to help present certificates of recognition to the players and coaches. And would everyone in the audience please join me in a big round of applause for the Whipple Championship? (applause)
I'm kind of loud. Who am I looking at first? I'm looking at Lexi Lutherin. Come on up.[255.31][255.31](applause)
Yeah, stay up, because we're going to do a picture.
Okay. Christina Didianno.[265.33][265.33](applause) Kaylee Klink.[267.33][267.33](applause) Nicole Page.[269.33][269.33](applause) Christine Kavalcik.[271.33][271.33](applause) Laura Page.[273.33][273.33](applause) Lauren Schaefer.[275.33][275.33](applause) Megan Horgan.[277.33][277.33](applause) Shannon Conley.[279.33][279.33](applause) Alexis Taylor.[281.33][281.33](applause) Mia Mattis.[283.33][283.33](applause) Paige Kochka Pushkar.[285.33][285.33](applause) Caitlin Chess.[287.33][287.33](applause) Sammy Simpson.[289.33][289.33](applause) Megan Marisick.[291.33][291.33](applause) Monica Locke.[293.33][293.33](applause) Harper Zimmer.[295.33][295.33](applause) And Mariah Penesino.
Now you might have to switch all those, because she gave them out in different order.[308.14][308.14](laughing)
That's classic. That's what I would do. Thank you.
Yeah, they all had your names, but she just called you out in the order you received, and so you have to all switch now. (laughing)
Okay. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
Move the adoption.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries eight to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 26, 2013.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that carries eight to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held March 19, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and March 26, 2013, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report in. Dr. Stark?
Ms. Vicki will have to get herself right over there. And I need to apologize once again. This is a very long meeting, what a terrible report, what a terrible problem to have so much to celebrate.
So much good news, yeah.
Yeah, so much good news. Okay. Our Bethel Park High School DECA students had a great competition at the 2013 DECA State Career Development Conference. This year, 14 of our students were named finalists and 10 students were medallion winners. Nine students qualified to compete at the DECA International Career Development Conference in April in Anaheim, California. All the state winners' names are on the screen, but at this time, I would like to highlight our international qualifiers. Congratulations to Amanda Stefeski, Grant Underwood, David Black, Tara Nath, A.J. Barofio, Haley Prow, Jessah Hoag, Sean McLean, and Tim Render. Congratulations to all of our DECA students, and good luck to these nine students as they advance to the next level of competition. Eleven Bethel Park High School students earned medals at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of Americas Pennsylvania State Leadership Conference. Congratulations to Georgiana Smith, Sarah Amato, Kelsey Bauer, Elizabeth Hartman, Christina Hartman, Mary Blackmore, Brianna Brookins, Bree Spellman, Fay Greiner, Abigail Beatty, and Michaela Coller. Four of these students, Georgiana, Sarah, Fay, and Abigail, qualified to complete in the FCCLA National Competition this summer in Nashville. Congratulations to all of these students, and good luck to the national qualifiers. Bethel Park High School Honors and AP German Students had their best competition in school history at the American Association of Teachers of Germans Three Rivers German Day Competition at California University of Pennsylvania. Bethel Park students competed against a dozen area schools and brought home 15 of the competition's 33 awards. The winners' names are on the screen, but I would like to call attention to our first-place winners, Haley Lazzari, Becca Najinski, Erica Miller, and Jack Brownfield. Two Bethel Park High School students earned the Extra Effort Award from the Steel Center Vocational Technical School for the second quarter of the 2013-14 school year. Congratulations to Shawyane Bell, a student in the Cosmetology Program, and Brendan Heron, a student in the Medium Heavy Truck Technology Program. The awards are given to those students who have demonstrated outstanding attendance, theory work, shop work, work ethic, and attitude. Congratulations to both of these students. Bethel Park High School senior Nate Ashton was named the February Student of the Month by the Rotary Club of Bethel Park in recognition of his leadership to coordinate numerous school and community service activities as part of his involvement with the High School Student Government Association, and also his mission trip work through his church. Each month, the Rotary Club recognizes outstanding Bethel Park High School students who have demonstrated outstanding commitment to school and community. Bethel Park High School freshman Grace Brugeman will compete in the first Robotics World Championships in St. Louis in April. Grace is a member of a team called Girls of Steel, which is sponsored by Carnegie Mellon University. The team received the Engineering Inspiration Award at the Pittsburgh Regional Robotics Competition to qualify for the World Championships. For the local competition, the girls were asked to design and build a rugged, autonomous, and teleoperated robot in six weeks that could effectively cooperate and compete with other robots to play ultimate frisbee and climb a pyramid structure. Good luck to Grace as she advances to the World Championships. Our high school winter sports teams recently concluded successful seasons, led by the Girls Basketball Team who won the Whipple Championship for the first time in school history and advanced to the state playoffs for the third time in four years. Other highlights include the Ice Hockey Team advancing to the semifinals of the Penguin Cup Championship. The Boys Swimming Team finished in third place at the Whipple Championships and in 12th place at the state championships. Eric Brinkhoff is the Whipple champion in the 50-meter freestyle for the third consecutive year. Other swimming Whipple champions are Zach Misak, Mitch Sahara, Dan Litwin, and Eric Brinkhoff in the 200-meter freestyle relay. Two of our wrestlers were section champions. Congratulations to Paul Dunn and Nate Gyro. Our Girls Swimming Team finished in seventh place at the Whipple Championships, and our Boys Basketball Team qualified for the Whipple playoffs. Our competitive cheerleading squad competed in the first-ever state cheerleading championships after earning qualifying scores at the Whipple Championships. Congratulations to all of our athletes and coaches for successful seasons. You can read about all of our sports teams' accomplishments on the athletic webpage. Several of our high school and Independence Middle School students brought home third and fourth-place awards from this year's Science Olympiad. Congratulations to Christian Hokey, Logan Tuitt, Victoria Jakasik, Katerina Kimes, Jared Single, Shannon Fagan, Brandon Hanson, Haley Smith, Haley Lazzari, Evan Aronhal, Matt Nestler, Emily Augustine, Sean McLean, Catherine Kimes, Casey Mack, Kyle Copeland, and Tarush Ball. Seventh-grade Latin I students at Independence Middle School did a terrific job writing and staging a play entitled "The Myth" as the culminating experience of their unit on the history of Roman theater. The students wrote the script, made costumes and scenery, and performed a musical score to accompany the play about the Titans coming back from the dead to defeat the gods. Neil Armstrong Middle School held its 15th annual Battle of the Books in February, and this year's winning team was the Smart Cookies. Annette Barnhart, Randy Johns, Sarah Long, Madeline Marzina, Caitlin Von Aaronkirk, and Lily Wilson. This year, 19 teams competed and prepared for the competition by reading four books. Thanks to Neil Armstrong librarian Debbie Walco for once again coordinating this great school tradition that encourages students to read. A group of Neil Armstrong Middle School fifth graders appeared tonight on the Pittsburgh Penguins pregame show to once again demonstrate the use of the street hockey equipment the Penguins donated to all Bethel Park Elementary and Middle Schools, as well as hundreds of other schools in western Pennsylvania, as part of their PENNS FIT grant program. Last week, the Penguins Foundation visited Neil Armstrong to film the students using the equipment for the pregame show, and they also interviewed Lincoln Phys Ed teacher Michael Schaal about the benefits of the equipment to our Phys Ed program. Tonight, the Penguins are having a charity auction during the pregame and the game against the Montreal Canadiens, with the proceeds of that auction benefiting the PENNS FIT program. This is the third time the Penguins have come to Bethel Park to film this particular group of students, because they do an excellent job of demonstrating how much fun it is to use the equipment. Memorial second graders in Jill Schaal's room created five-slide PowerPoint presentations dealing why they should be principal for a day, and gave oral presentations to their classmates and their families to campaign for their votes. All of the presentations were terrific, and the students made some creative suggestions on what they would do to improve Memorial should they be elected principal for a day. Some of the suggestions included installing a swimming pool and hot tub on the playground, being able to bring your dog to school, and installing trampoline material in the hallway so you could bounce from classroom to classroom.[898.82][898.82](laughing) In a close vote, Carly O'Mara was elected to the principal for a day, and she recently had the opportunity to show Mr. Chalice, to shadow Mr. Chalice, and learn what it's like to lead a school. Congratulations, Carly. Met's Culinary Management recently held a drawing in which all Bethel Park students were eligible to receive three free tickets to a Pittsburgh Penguins game. The winner was Memorial first grader Benjamin Buell, who was excited to see his first Penguin game and be there to cheer on his favorite hockey player, Sidney Crosby. Over 200 students at Washington Elementary School are using their recess time to train for the Pittsburgh Kids Marathon. They have formed a group called "We Run," and they wear their "We Run" T-shirts to school every Wednesday to participate in running and fitness activities. The back of their T-shirts says it all: "We run because it's fun." This year, two Bethel Park High School teachers have been named semifinalists for the 2014 Pennsylvania Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to English teacher Nicola Hipkins and science teacher Clyde Qualk. They are among a group of 33 Pennsylvania teachers who have been named semifinalists. Mrs. Hipkins and Mr. Qualk will find out at the end of April if they will be named finalists. This is the second consecutive year Mr. Qualk has advanced to the semifinalist round, and the first year for Mrs. Hipkins. We congratulate both of them, and we have our fingers crossed that they will both be named finalists. Bethel Park High School physics teacher Clyde Qualk was also in the news recently when he was featured in a Tribune Review story about area teachers who were using technology creatively to engage their students in the classroom. His story appeared in the February 24 edition of the Tribune Review. And congratulations to Bethel Park Athletic Director Amy Shuniman, who has been named president-elect of the Whipple Athletic Directors Association for the next school years, for the next two school years, before she will assume the role of president in 2015. As president-elect, Mrs. Shuniman will serve as the Athletic Directors' representative on the Whipple Board of Control. She is the first female to serve in this capacity. Bethel Park High School will stage the musical "42nd Street" Wednesday through Saturday, April 3 through 6, at 7:30 p.m. in the Bethel Park High School Auditorium. Tickets can be purchased at the door at a cost of $10 for rows A through O and $8 for rows P through C.C. Senior citizens can receive half-price admission to the Wednesday and Thursday night performances only. Children fourth grade and under can also receive half-price admission to any show. If you like tap dancing, you'll love this show. We hope to see you at the first musical to be staged in the new high school. To the cast and crew, all we can say is break a leg. And that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you. Is anyone here from student government? Solicitors' report?
A written report has been distributed to the board for its review.
Thank you. Any committee reports from the board?
I have one. Mrs. Cook, the curriculum committee met on March 12, and we will be meeting again. The date has not been selected to continue to review all the material involved, and as soon as we have that date, we'll let the public know. Thank you.
And we have two meetings?
Financing facilities both meet tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, 7:00 p.m. here. Any public comments on agenda items? Agenda items only.
Good evening. Steve Hustler, 5600 Library Road. I just wanted to comment on item eight in the Finance Committee on page seven of the agenda. There's a presentation about this at the meeting last week, and just based on that, I mean, I'm by no means an expert on data storage and all that stuff, but it just seemed, from the presentation, from what I could gather, that there might be less expensive options that we can explore to address this need. I don't feel like the question was fully answered about the necessity of this. I know, you know, it's talked about how there were some data where we're actually using more than we have, and, you know, that sounds pretty dire, but I just wonder if there's a way, you know, another thing that was mentioned was, you know, there's stuff being stored that, you know, has to be, legally has to be stored, that has to be kept for 99 years, you know, student records, and obviously, that's stuff that has to be stored, but it didn't sound like everything that we're storing absolutely has to be stored, and I just wonder, can we clean some of that up? Can we stop storing as much as we're storing? Those kind of questions kind of weren't brought up, and I just wonder if that's a possibility? Is it a less, are there less expensive options? Are there, you know, is, like I said, cleaning up the current usage a possibility? Is renting or leasing storage space less expensive? You know, just with all the, you know, I know there's talk of, you know, the budget deficit. I know the budget's going to be kind of worked out in the next few weeks and months, and things are going to have to be cut, and, you know, really, you know, paying attention to costs, and this just seems like something, you know, $200,000 expenditure. I just would really urge the board to not, to kind of look into other, less expensive options before approving this, so I really urge the board tonight to vote against that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cook, could I say something?
Yes, sir.
One of the things with data backup is, you don't know what you're backing up whenever you back it up. You back things up on a daily basis. Some of it's important, some of it isn't important. You were talking about things you have to keep for 99 years that are absolutely essential and a legal requirement. In addition to that, you have day-to-day type things you have to store that can really affect you if you, if you lose them, you know, grades for the semester or something like that. And, like I said, the problem is, people do work every day, and it's not sorted out by high priority, low priority, so you really don't have much choice other than to back up everything. I can understand your concern about that. Roddenmeyer is a pretty good guy, and if he says that's what we need, I have pretty good confidence that that's what we need, so I agree in part with what you're saying, but the fact of the matter is, you have all this stuff comes in every day, and you don't sort it on a daily basis, so.
Thank you. Any other public comments on agenda items?
Tom Majernik, 5460 Glen Hill Drive. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Hustler said. I don't believe that we did do our due diligence. I don't believe that everything being stored out there, I also spent 30 years in data, and don't believe that we have done our due diligence and considered all of the options. Outsourcing, is that, that wasn't even on the table. Is outsourcing an option? You should know that. Can we pay someone a lot less on a monthly basis to store data? Because in two years, the data storage that we buy now isn't going to be worth what it is. So many companies and organizations outsource, they rent data storage area. It might be a less expensive alternative now when we're in a financial crunch, okay? And I think another alternative is to do nothing. I don't think we're going to lose our data. I don't think that's going to happen. I think with, with the disk array systems that are in today's networks, we don't, you're not going to lose data. It might, the worst-case scenario, folks, is it's going to run a little bit slower. You know what? With the financial straits we're in right now, guess what? You've got to run a little bit slower. So, again, I urge the board to table this, make sure we get all of our ducks in a row before we spend another $200,000, and there were an additional person added on here at the end, another $60,000 for another person, I think they were talking about, that we would need to hire someone to help manage this BYOD thing. He talked about that, he talked about that last week, that he would have to hire someone in addition. So you're taking, talking about a quarter million dollars, or more. So I urge the board not to vote against this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll move into business items. Curriculum committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening for curriculum. Would anyone want any of those held? Hearing none, I move under curriculum, number one, the school-sponsored overnight educational activity. Number two, the math curriculum purchase for grades K to five. And number three, professional development.
Second.
Items one through three under curriculum have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I just will ask one, again, I asked at the committee meeting. The math curriculum purchase, the committee consisted of teacher members, and they were in agreement with this purchase. Is that correct? Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry eight to zero. Personnel committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 10 items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move for item one, approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Item three, acceptance of resignation. Four, approval of tuition reimbursement. Five, approval of staffing changes. Six, appointment of personnel. Seven, approval of a 2013 extended school year program. Eight, approval of administration, tuition, reimbursement. Nine, approval of handbook for salaried maintenance/head custodial employees. And 10, change of assignment.
Second.
Items one through 10 under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Sustich. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustich.
Thank you. There are three items under Facilities and Services. Would anybody like any items held out? Hearing none, I'd like to move to the following items. Approval of the construction management services for Neil Armstrong Middle School. And this is the approval of Maserow Corporation to act as a construction management firm for Neil Armstrong School renovation project at a cost not to exceed $35,000. Item number two, approval of door replacements at Memorial Elementary School in the amount of $49,175.14. And finally, item number three, approval of the purchase of a dump truck in a net amount of $18,495.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustich and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustich.
Thank you. There are three items under Facilities and Services. Would anybody like any items held out? Hearing none, I'd like to move to the following items. Approval of the construction management services for Neil Armstrong Middle School. And this is the approval of Maserow Corporation to act as a construction management firm for Neil Armstrong School renovation project at a cost not to exceed $35,000. Item number two, approval of door replacements at Memorial Elementary School in the amount of $49,175.14. And finally, item number three, approval of the purchase of a dump truck in a net amount of $18,495.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustich and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those items carry eight to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Rose.
There are nine items under Finance Committee agenda. Anybody like any of them held out separately?
I'd like number eight held out. Eight? Eight.
You got it. Anything else? I move the following items. March 2013 salaries and bills, the February 2013 financial report. Number three, the approval of the June 20, 2012 audit report. Number four, adoption of AIU resolution. Number five, AIU program of services budget. Number six, approval of student services contract. Number seven, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning training.[1522.15]
With the financial straits we're in right now, guess what? You've got to run a little bit slower. So, again, I urge the board to table this. Make sure we get all of our ducks in a row before we spend another $200,000, and there were an additional person added on here at the end, another $60,000 for another person, I think they were talking about, that we would need to hire someone to help manage this BYOD thing. He talked about that, he talked about that last week, that he would have to hire someone in addition. So you're taking, talking about a quarter million dollars, or more. So I urge the board not to vote against this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing that, I'll move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening for curriculum. Would anyone want any of those held? Hearing none, I move under curriculum number one, the school-sponsored overnight educational activity. Number two, the math curriculum purchase for grades K to five. And number three, professional development.
Second.
Items one through three under curriculum have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items? I just will ask one, again, I asked at the committee meeting. The math curriculum purchase, the committee consisted of teacher members, and they were in agreement with this purchase. Is that correct? Any other questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 10 items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? If not, I move for item one, approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Item three, acceptance of resignation. Four, approval of tuition reimbursement. Five, approval of staffing changes. Six, appointment of personnel. Seven, approval of a 2013 extended school year program. Eight, approval of administration tuition reimbursement. Nine, approval of handbook for salaried maintenance/head custodial employees. And 10, change of assignment.
Second.
Items one through 10 under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Sustage. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustage.
Thank you. There are three items under Facilities and Services. Would anybody like any items held out? Hearing none, I'd like to move the following items. Approval of the construction management services for Neil Armstrong Middle School. And this is the approval of Maserow Corporation to act as construction management firm for Neil Armstrong School renovation project at a cost not to exceed $35,000. Item number two, approval of door replacements at Memorial Elementary School in the amount of $49,175.14. And finally, item number three, approval of the purchase of a dump truck in a net amount of $18,495.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mr. Spakusa. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry eight to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Rose.
There are nine items under Finance Committee agenda. Anybody like any of them held out separately?
I'd like number eight held out. Eight? Eight.
You got it. Anything else? I move the following items. March 2013 salaries and bills. The February 2013 financial report. Number three, the approval of the June 20, 2012 audit report. Number four, adoption of AIU resolution. Number five, AIU program of services budget. Number six, approval of student services contract. Number seven, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning training. And number nine, approval of agreement with Clear Choice Energy. I move the approval.
Items one through seven and nine under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Rose and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry eight to zero. Mr. Rose.
I move the approval of item number eight, approval of data center additional capacities replacements.
Second.
Item number eight under Finance Committee has been moved by Mr. Rose and seconded by Mr. Amadis. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question of Mrs. Rose. Mrs. Rose, is there anything that's time-sensitive in number eight?
In terms of storage?
No, in terms of it has to be done immediately, and it couldn't be put off for a month?
I would say that we probably should not put it off because by the time we purchase it and have it installed for the summer movement of data reconstruction, that if we put it off, we're not going to have it here in time to have it completed for the start of the school year. One of the biggest frustrations that our teachers have expressed year after year is the startup, the beginning of the school year, and the technology frustrations when things aren't in place. So I would recommend that this be passed tonight if that's the will of the board to have the extra storage. And if we don't have it, we may be in danger of losing critical data.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. Mr. Amadis, will you take other for me this evening?
I will do that. We have one item under other, it's student agreement. I move the approval of item number one, which is student agreement. The Board of Director approves the administration's recommendation to approve the resolution and agreement for student number 000810.
Second.
Item one under other has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Rose. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries eight to zero. It's now time for public comments. Again, I will remind you, when you come to the microphone, please state your name and address. Before beginning your remarks, you have two minutes to share your comments with the board. Again, not a question-and-answer period, rather a time to share your thoughts with us.
Anita Potacar, Mapleview Drive. I wanted to make a few comments about the proposal of cutting the math and science credits for graduation. The last report that I have read, it names that the United States is about 25th down compared to 50 educated countries as far as how students perform in math and science. And I think it's China and Finland that rate number one, the place where we, the United States, used to be. But this could mean that we're graduating less scientists, less engineers, less accountants, less doctors, and so on, which means that perhaps the strength of America could be in jeopardy. It's kind of upsetting to read these statistics, but it's also double concern if we think we might be lowering the credits for graduation in math and science in Bethel Park. I think that there may be parental pressure to do so, and perhaps we heard at the last meeting that the students hate math. Well, that's kind of giving them a false sense of reality, and we would be sending the wrong message because when they're lucky enough to get a job, I'm sure they're going to have to stick out and do stuff that they don't like. I think that it's important to maintain our competitiveness in the world, and I think companies already are looking beyond our borders to hire talented and qualified people instead of the Americans. So I think you, I'd like to encourage you to reconsider and hope it doesn't happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I was born and raised in Bethel Park, and I graduated from Bethel Park High School in 1988. And in 1996, I sat in the last row of chairs in this room as the school board approved me as a teacher at my alma mater, and I practically skipped out of the room. For 17 years, I've worked hard at my job, and I've tried to give myself for the benefit of my students. And I got a box full of letters from former kids who have told me that they've appreciated the positive impact that I've had on their lives. For much of the last 17 years, I have loved my job, and I've felt like I've made a difference. And I don't feel that way anymore. Today marks the 1,000th day that I have been frozen on step 14 of the old teacher's contract. I keep hearing of the new economic reality, that there isn't enough money to pay me to do my job. But my new reality is that I walk into room 417 every morning, and I look into the faces of 30, 15-year-olds, and I think to myself, these kids' parents hate me, or at least the elective representatives of these kids' parents hate me. And they think that when I became a teacher, that I should have taken a vow of poverty, and that if I don't, that I've done something wrong for which I need to do penance. And that teachers should be punished for wanting to make enough money to put food on their family's tables, or to help defray the cost of their son's college education, or help pay for their daughter's weddings. And for the last three years, I've heard a lot about the economic cost of education, but there is a human cost to be considered as well. A human cost to sending a generation of kids in this community into a classroom with a discouraged, disaffected, and embittered teacher. And I'm sad to say that I'm becoming that kind of teacher. I wish I wasn't. I wish that I was a better man, and I accept part of the blame for that. But I want you to know that I think that in trying to punish the teachers over the course of the last three years, you've helped create an environment that is turning me into that kind of a teacher. I remain hopeful-
That's two minutes, if you could wrap it up, please.
I will.
Thank you.
I remain hopeful that my new reality over the next 17 years will not be that reality, and I'm hoping that that won't be the legacy that you leave for a new generation of kids when your terms on the school board are over. As teachers, we stand here willing to accept anything within a country mile of reasonable, and I'm hopeful that that will lead to a resolution in the days to come.
Thank you.
Jonathan Gentile, 567 Chesbryer Drive. Today marks 1,000 days without a contract. The last seven years, I can be defined as a BP resident, a father, softball coach, a head varsity soccer coach, an AP European History teacher, and alternative education teacher at Bethel Park. I put in countless hours at this district. As a new father of my two-month-old son, I have begun to seriously consider whether I should continue to live in Bethel Park. This is something I never thought I would ever think, let alone say publicly. But there's only so much I can take. For me, action speaks louder than words. Board claim, we have no money. I'm tired of this economic chuse. 490 districts across the state have figured it out, which means more than 4,400 school board members throughout the state have solved contract issues in these tough economic times, but our nine have failed to do so in these thousand days. We continue to spend on capital improvements, every administrator received raises, and lawyer fees, only the good Lord knows the total, but we don't have the money, do we? Second claim, the board cares about getting this contract resolved. President Donna Cook spoke with the high school staff at the beginning of this school year and promised getting this contract done is your number-one priority. Your action? How many of you on the board in the 60-plus negotiating sessions have actually been present during those negotiating sessions? My educated guess, that may be one, two of you attended a handful of sessions, maybe, and several of you, most likely, zero. We now have two outstanding contracts, teachers and bus drivers. Pairs and secretaries are up in June. That leaves you with four contracts by June 3 of 2013. Contracts should be your priority, but getting them done is clearly not. Thousand days without a teacher contract is an embarrassment that has gone on long enough. The contract is a priority, and if students are the reason why you're here, then start acting like it and take ownership of what you say.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Carl Frankenstein. I'm at 1,000 Delilah Drive. And I wasn't really planning on saying anything, but I've been hearing all these numbers floating around, 200 grand for storage. I'm really not thrilled with that issue or anything like that, but with all this money floating around, and you're saying we're in a budget crunch, why are we spending all this, like, on storage, for example? And yet, the transportation part is being threatened to be outsourced. I'd like to find a little more detail on it, to be honest. Perhaps can the, can the board have an itemized expense report published on the Bethel Park webpage so the community can actually look at it, both expense for everything, see where everything went, from the cost of salaries, whatever, all the way down to what a crayon box would cost? That way, we can all look at it, and who knows? We got a lot of smart people. Maybe they can see something that we've, that you guys overlooked, and they can come up with a solution that might be viable. So I would call for that, at least something, maybe for at least over the past four or five years, of something itemized. It'd be very easy to do, with a computer could do it. I'm sure Buzzy can easily do that, and just put it in a PDF format, and so we could freely just download it. Those who'd want a copy, well, obviously, there'd be fees and expense involved, having to make those copies. But I would like you, I would appreciate if you considered doing that and get a little more transparency and a little more trust going on here, because I think that's where a lot of it's happening here, is that there's just a lot of mistrust and a lot of disinformation, and this is not helping us at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Paisor, 3224 Arapaho Road. First of all, just an aside, out in the hallway is the monthly bill paid list that I know I've picked up on a regular basis. Anybody can pick that up. It's printed out for the public. You can see item by item, down to every lunch that the bus drivers get paid for is on that list out there on a monthly basis. I'm very upset by what I hear, heard tonight. Negotiations are a two-way street. I would not say that you have failed. I would say that you and the Federation of Teachers have failed to reach a contract. I don't see how it can be blamed on one side or the other, especially since we know there was offers out there, and we have seen the final best offer ourself, which I don't, if that's not within a country mile of reasonable, I don't know. I don't understand why that was walked out on. I am very discouraged to hear that someone would openly admit that they hate being in their classroom and hate their job, and the only thing I can respond to that is say, you need to quit. Walk out, do something else if it's that bad. When my child was walked out on for six weeks, did he hate his teachers? He tried not to. Neither did I. It was hard. Not one teacher apologized to me. Not one teacher apologized to my child for what they did to him. You have a lot of nerve coming here and whining about something.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anne Borderly Ashland Drive. I was filled with joy tonight when we honored the basketball team, the girls' basketball team. It was a wonderful moment. We stood up, applauded for them and the wonderful things that they accomplished. And then I heard that we are trying to punish the teachers. The gentleman who spoke spoke very well, but that one statement just stuck in my head that I don't think anybody is trying to punish teachers. And if that's the attitude that is prevalent, it's a very sad day for us. I don't, I know all of you as board members. I've come to board meetings for the past five or six years and a long time before that. And it saddens me to think that in this district, people think we are trying to punish teachers. I'm very sorry that the man who spoke feels that way. I don't think anybody that lives here wants to punish teachers. I think both sides have to work to solve this dispute. I do think that hearing that contract negotiation should be a priority, I guess it should be, but the priority should be the education of the young people that live in this district to the best of our ability and the best of our ability to pay. And I hope that that is what we will be thinking about when we continue with negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I got here a little late this evening. I was watching my granddaughter at a recital over at Baldwin Whitehall.
Name and address, sir.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm Master Sergeant John Delal, and I live at 1565 Lucille Drive, and, thank you, Mr. Howard, I should know better. I understand that right before I walked in, there was a board vote on equipment. I jokingly, at the last session, made, mentioned to two of the school board members that during the Apollo Space Program, the United States of America spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop a ballpoint pen that would work in zero gravity. You can still buy it. It's called the Fisher Space Pen. The Russians took a pencil. Before you write the first purchase order, you might want to take a look at the compatibility of Dell and the equipment that you currently have on hand. You might want to have another set of eyes, take a look at that $250,000, which would go a long way towards paying teachers. And on the subject of teachers, would the gentlelady, Mrs. Cook, stand for a brief interrogation?
No. I don't believe so. Sir, this is a matter of public comment. This is not under the Sunshine Law, a period of time for you to interrogate or question people sitting here or sitting in the audience. So you have two minutes, you have two minutes to make public comments.
So I repeat my question. Will she stand for interrogation?
No.
Thank you very much. That said, then I'll make a statement. Mrs. Cook, I wonder if you are aware that the current solicitors have fallen on rougher times in Charters Valley as well as in West Mifflin. We've retained them for some thousand days with little or no impact so far as resolution of a teacher's contract. That's an abomination. I'd ask you to keep that in mind, and I'd like everybody in the room to keep it in mind. I spoke about ulterior motives, and there's no better ulterior motive than the almighty dollar. Now, far be it from me to suggest that the solicitor is lining his pockets with taxpayer dollars. I asked for the total dollar value given or paid to the solicitor in these past 1,000 days. I haven't gotten any mail or a phone call response or even an email, and I assume that I'm not going to get a response unless you have one prepared for me this evening.
Mr. Delal, that's two minutes.
Very well. It'd just take me a second to wrap up. So I need to find out, are you going to force my hand and force me to file under the Freedom of Information Act or write to no law? of Information Act or write to no law? I think you're allowed to answer that question.
For the information you're requesting?
Absolutely.
Yes, you would need to file.
Okay, I'll do that in the morning. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Denise Dillon, 5969 Monongahela. This is one of the reasons I keep requesting that negotiations be held in public. We're told it's the board's fault. Well, I've, we've seen best offers, we don't see anything, we hear stories, the bus drivers are saying this, things are being sent home on the bus with kids, people are spreading all kinds of stories, they're, you know, saying this, the attorney's trying to raise money, you know? Put it all out in the open. Put out all, you can put the attorney's fees out, put out all the attorney fee money wasted or not, what is it, ULPs, unfair labor practice, or every simple little complaint. I heard a rumor there was something, someone filed a complaint because his coffee maker wasn't working. I, you know, there's a lot of silly things. Put everything out there. If we're going to do it for one, let's do it for everything. But again, I really think that negotiations should be transparent, public should know, both sides. I get tired of hearing people complaining about every purchase that's made to benefit the students, and then they counter it with saying, "And we should be paying the teachers more." Teachers walked out on our kids right at the beginning of negotiations. It's not the first time they've ever done it, they've done it six times. We're here for the kids. If you don't like your job, no one's making you stay. I've left many jobs that I didn't like, my pay was cut, didn't like it, I went and found another job. Instead of sitting here complaining or saying, "I want you to hate your job," there's no reason for it. It's not helping your students. The kids are not benefiting, if you come in hating your job, kids sense it. Kids aren't going to learn, they're going to start goofing off, so you're affecting their study. Again, transparent negotiations, we'll see both sides. Thank you.
Thank you. Have we ever done negotiations in public in Bethel Park?
I've been negotiating contracts in the public sector for 21 years personally, and I've worked with a number of other attorneys who have done it for even longer than that. And I do not recall a single instance in this school district, any school district that I've represented, any municipality that I've represented, engaging in negotiations in a public forum. There are various statutory schemes that aid parties in negotiating contracts. In municipalities, for police and firefighters, it's Act 111. If you're unable to reach an agreement, you go to binding arbitration. There is no binding arbitration with regard to teachers, bus drivers, paraprofessionals, secretaries. We have Act 88. Act 88 provides for a series of procedures that are to aid the parties in getting, if possible, an agreement. Negotiating in public is not one of those mandated requirements. And in all honesty, I, I, I think that that approach, I've never tried it, I've never seen it done, I tend to think it would be counterproductive. The thing that is difficult is that a public entity such as a school board engages in good faith bargaining and has no opportunity to address the membership of the various unions that are represented. But the members of those unions could come to a public meeting such as this, say what they want, when they want, and what the public hears is that side of the story. We have asked this board repeatedly not to talk about negotiations because we do not think that it would be fair to the union, to the board, to the district, to be talking about those types of things and basically putting it out there and trying to win over the public whenever your job is to do what's in the best interest of the taxpayers, the students, and the members of the community. I, I don't know how to answer whether or not it would be appropriate or it would be beneficial to negotiate in public. I can assure you that the union might likely not want to negotiate in public either, because they then would have the same concern that people will hear things that they may not want the public to, to know or to hear. Or neither side would want the public to hear things because it's so complex, there would not be a valid understanding of what is going on in negotiations. So I, I can't say that I've ever seen it, I don't know of any other solicitor that I've ever worked with or known that is engaged in negotiations in the public sector. I started my work with Bruce Campbell, who did negotiations with the Federation of Teachers, City of Pittsburgh, and I don't ever recall a negotiation session in the City of Pittsburgh School District ever being in public either.
Okay, thank you for that, because I know Denise has come a number of times and suggested that, and I, quite frankly, I was shocked to hear a few of the comments this evening as well. There is no one on this board, there is no one in this community that is trying to punish teachers. I, I don't, that, I can't even, I can hardly say those words to even respond to that. Again, I'm asked, how many times am I at negotiation sessions? I am, if I am not here in person, I am a phone call away. We act as a board of nine, one person being here isn't going to make or break negotiations. How many teachers are present at negotiations? I believe the teachers have a, a group of people that I have ever seen here, I don't see all of the Federation here at any one negotiation session. I would hope no one would consider not living in Bethel Park because we are working under the terms of an expired contract. We are doing our best. It's not good enough, but it's the best that we can do at this moment in time. I apologize to you that you think it is not good enough. The economic realities of Act One, you're talking about expenditures I am making, you need recurring monies to pay teachers. I am making one item at a time on expenditures, I am not having recurring funds that are there. I'm going to move into board comments, Mr. Means.
Yeah, Mrs. Cook, okay.
Public comments.
You commented once already. The public comment session wasn't done.
No, she did.
No, no. No, we're not doing this.
No.
We're not doing this.
No.
We went from, we went from public comment to board comment. All right, whatever.
We're finished with public comment, we're moving into board comments.
Yes, she did so. Can we play back the video because there is not, there was never a comment, there was any additional public comment. He sat down and he went in, she turned to you. She turned to you and asked you for. Let me just, let me just say this, this board has the right to determine how it's going to conduct its meetings. It had its public comment.
You responded to that lady.
I did not respond to anyone, I responded.
She responded to me, I had a question based on what someone had said. We have called for public comments how many times?
And everyone, he got up, now it's my turn. You never asked for final public comment. Would you like to review the video?
Didn't he speak before?
Yes.
You're only allowed to speak one time.
No, he spoke on agenda items. He did not speak in public comment.
Let him go.
All right.
I will try to be brief. My, my concern is, is this. In the two years plus that we have been trying to negotiate this contract.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Name and address, please.
Yes. Thomas Majernik, 5460 Glen Hill Drive. Since Charters Valley got rid of the solicitor that Bethel Park currently has, Charters Valley has gotten two contracts. They were in contract negotiations, new solicitor came in, contract was taken care of. Last week, or two weeks ago, they signed an extension. Maybe, since we're having some issues, maybe the board needs to consider a new solicitor to help facilitate this process if our current solicitor doesn't seem to be making any headway here. Not saying the teachers are right, I'm not saying the, the board's right, I'm saying the, the common denominator here unable to get it done, maybe it's time to make a change, like Charters Valley and West Mifflin has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it okay, I know I commented at the beginning, is it okay to comment again? Okay. Steve Hustler, 5600 Library Road. I, I didn't plan on, on talking about the, the teachers this evening, but there are just, some things are very frustrating me about the comments that were just made by the, the solicitor. You know, the, the idea about, you know, in 21 years, never seen public negotiations, you know, in any district, that, okay, that may be true, but I, I, I don't know the history of all districts. I've never heard of a district going three years without a teacher's contract. So, you know, maybe it, it is time to, to look at it, something that's kind of an extreme and, and unique circumstance. You know, this idea that, you know, the union might not think it's fair to have a public negotiation, I don't, what's happening right now isn't fair. I mean, what, what, it's not fair to either the board or the teachers. There's so many rumors going around for, on both sides, there's so much misinformation, no one knows, there's this very little public information about what actually is happening, and that's not fair to either side, all, all the misinformation that's going around. So, so maybe having it a more public process, you know, the fact that, that we're, that this is devolving into, to shouting matches, that we have teachers feeling as discouraged as they are, that, this is such an amazing district. This is, we have so many great administrators, board members, teachers, students, and to have this, have this, this negativity surrounding this issue is just, I feel such a drain right now in our district, and maybe it is time to do something extreme and, and, and have this be a more public process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Candace LaHickey, 5525 Anetta Drive. I didn't plan on speaking tonight. You stated before public comment that you weren't going to respond to anybody. You responded, and you got angry and made yourself look ridiculous in front of everybody, and then you tried to change what you said. I think every one of you should step down, and should all be ashamed of yourselves. The teachers being out for a thousand days, but us bus drivers and aides are also almost out two years, shouldn't take that long. Shouldn't take that long to come up with a contract. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you.
Victor Prampero, 1122 Clifton Road. You know, a thousand days without a contract is, is, is something that I really never anticipated in my 21 years of teaching. You know me, you know that I love the kids, I always put them first, that's what I do. We're starting to lose teachers. We have people resign, we've got somebody resigned to go to the city this year. It shouldn't happen in Bethel Park, ever. We have seven, six people retirement under, under a letter A, under professional, we have six different people retiring, one of them in my department. How in the world am I going to convince somebody to come to this toxic environment? Three years, no contract? You have to be out of your mind to come here. I feel bad making Johnny leave South Carolina to come here. I begged him to come, the kid's so good, he's a great teacher. I hope, I hope that my children have Jimmy for class one day, I hope that they do. I'll do everything I can to have them have him. He's a fantastic teacher. We deserve better. We deserve everybody. Like the first year, all of us meet until it's done. Like my first year of teaching, that's how I started. We all had to meet until it was done, all the school board, all the staff. Let's do that, let's do anything, but let's meet and get it done. Because I, to fill these six spots, phew, that's going to be rough. It's going to be rough to find the best, to find the best, because that's what we want. We want the best. That's what we should want, not the okays. And that's what we need, we need a contract to attract the best to come to this place. And that's what I would hope we get.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Mr. Means, I'll move into board comments.
Mrs. Cook, I'm afraid I don't know what to say exactly. First of all, I'd like to begin by congratulating the basketball team, and it's a shame it couldn't have ended the meeting right there. I'm rather disheartened by some of the comments that I heard, and I can understand what's going on. For those of you who don't know, the way the teacher's contract, the pay scale is set up, they start out at about $45,000, they work their way up to about $57,000, 565, something like that. Then they have a big step increase between 16 and 17, where they get a $35,000 a year increase. Now, this contract impasse has been waged on the backs of those people looking at that big step increase. They've worked for a long time expecting it, and now we're at this impasse and they aren't getting it. But to assume it's the board's fault is ridiculous. As it was said before, it's a negotiation between the Federation of Teachers and the board. It's not one person's fault and the other person's not. The money just simply is not there. The teachers have been getting increases that don't show up. The costs that we put into their retirement went up by 4% last year, it's going up 4% this year, it's going up 4% next year. Health and care is increased. We're putting more money in every year, the amount of money we can raise is very limited. I don't think anybody's trying to punish teachers, but to insinuate that they aren't being paid a fair salary is ridiculous. I concur with a lot of what's said, I think we need more openness. I would like to see the teachers' individual salaries, their base salary, the salary with their extra duties, and all their compensation, all their, all their retirement and healthcare and everything, published on the website so people could look. Well, I don't think, I don't think so.
As a total?
I've seen some.
As a total?
As a total?
No, as a total with all the benefits is what he's saying.
When, in any event.
It should be board comments.
I would like to see that, that put on our website. So that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzzo.
I, I'd like to also congratulate our sports teams, all of our students, and all the wonderful work of the teachers, administrators, and everyone that made those things possible that were on the screen tonight. It is disheartening to hear that we don't care and we don't, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm almost a loss for words, which is really unusual for me. I think that, I know when I didn't get a raise for six years, I didn't stop doing my job, and I didn't quit doing what I needed to do, do my job. My job is my job, it's not about what I earn, it's, it's, it's not a job, first of all, it's a career. I think you have to look at it that way. I want to ask the same question I asked several times, how many people attended our budget meetings last year? Could you just raise a hand? We have very open budget meetings. If you want to know where the money's going, show up. I can show you, come tomorrow night, we'll show you. We'll show you the increases that Mr. Means was talking about for Peasars. Yeah, you might think that $200,000 is a lot of money, wait, wait until you see the screen tomorrow night, and you see what we're going to put into Peasars over the next four years. And, and don't worry about that $200,000. I have nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Puck.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the children who were mentioned in the part of Dr. Stark's report this evening, and the teachers who helped him get there, and the parents, and all the parties involved. It was nice to start on a positive note. I personally feel that there is not one person on this board who is out to punish the teachers. I think that that was a very mean and unfair statement, very, very mean. And it, it doesn't make any sense. It's not the school board that's trying to make things terrible here. We focus on children, and we also have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. And when there's only so much money available, what do you want us to do? A comment was made this evening about applying for welfare or being, taking a vow of poverty. I'll repeat something that I have said publicly before. The very first year that a strike vote was taken, for those of you who don't know it, I was a teacher in Bethel Park for 36 years, and I didn't know what to do as far as voting for the strike or not. I wasn't a B then, I was an S. They did it alphabetically, I had time to think about it, and also talked a lot about it prior to the meeting. A gentleman got up from the high school, and this was a long time ago, I don't even know who he was. He was, he, he got up to the microphone and he said, "I don't make enough money to feed my children to, at the end of the month. I qualify for food stamps." When they called my name, I voted for the strike, because I didn't feel anyone should qualify for food stamps for the work the teachers do. But sir, I beg to differ with you now, as numbers were mentioned, and I'm not going to get into that again, there's no one who comes into this district as a teacher who qualifies for. qualifies for food stamps. And if I'm wrong on that, then I'll apologize at the next meeting. We are here for children, and what disappoints me most is that there's a dollar sign attached to that. Where is your love for the kids and why you're here? Did you become a teacher to make a zillion dollars? Or did you become a teacher because of children? And I'm not going to look at anyone in the audience because I don't want to be accused of that, but I will say that in my heart, I know that there are people in this room who came, who became teachers because of children and not their paycheck. Thank you.
Mr. Rose.
Kind of tough to say anything tonight because of some of the comments we've heard. I'm really disappointed that some people made those comments. But I do want to congratulate all the students that were on the screen. I want to congratulate a great girls' basketball team. And I wanted to mention, I almost passed it off and scratched it off, but I happen to know the coach of the fifth grade girls' basketball team, who's in their third tournament tonight in the finals. They've won two, they have a 20-some game winning streak going on, and that's Bethel's future girls' basketball team for the high school. Congratulations to the fifth graders. And I want you to know that I support our solicitor and his staff 100% in what they've done for us over the years. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Roll.
I too am sorry to hear some of the comments because having been around Bethel, having been through all the six strikes we've had, or 30 years or whatever, those types of comments will stay here now forever. Once they're out of your mouth, it's just, people just don't forget those comments. And I know even if you're thinking or feeling that way, making a statement, it will stay, it will stay now in the community. That's the bad thing. We value your teachers, but I don't put a dollar on value because I think that if you're doing something that you like, or if there's something I want to purchase that I like, I don't look at the dollar value. It means value to me because I like it, because I enjoy it, because I want it. So it doesn't mean we don't value you because we're talking salary. We do value our teachers. I come from a family of teachers, I taught at the college level. I mean, I definitely place value on teaching. So I'm just sad to hear that, of how some of you are feeling and letting it out as you are doing that. I also want to say that our students have been representing us very well. Shasta had a student forum, and as usual, we're always well represented. Steel Center is now working with a program with U.S. Steel, they're also going to expand their welding program, so there's a lot of good things coming out of Steel Center Vocational School. And our AIU, which is the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, was just recently recognized by the, at the Tri-State Study Council, and it was sponsored by the Tri-State, who is affiliated with the University of Pittsburgh, and they were recognized as the excellent intermediate unit in the, you know, in the area. So I would also like to say Mr. Rose has been on that board how long, Dick? Many years. And I went in in August, so I'm very pleased to be, you know, we'll be able to take Dick's place, but at least to continue the good work that he's done on the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. They are well-recognized. And I'd like to say congratulations to our basketball team and all the students that got recognized tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sustage.
It's been a thousand days, and I'm going to still sit up here and bite my tongue and not make a comment that I will regret later.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett.
No further comments, sir.
And I gave my comments out of order, I apologize to the person who came up to chastise me, that was my board comments at that moment in time because I was just feeling the moment and gave my comments early. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move forward.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.